The first case is the twins Dr. Ouzan, Ouzan versus Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria.
Arabia, Arabia.
Yes.
Arabia, what did you call this? What did you call it? Arabia, I didn't know you were here.
Arabia, you just see me.
No, when I was asking you again. I didn't go to ask. Sorry about that. Let's let's try to play it like we are, okay? Our proceedings here, anything you're going to say will have to be under the order.
So we can do a petition without a petition here?
This is not just here, I don't know if you were here before, this this isn't the first hearing. So if you read the record, we have joined that hearing so that you cannot hear. So it's a continuation of the proceeding, it's not it's not a first hearing.
In the name of Allah, the most beneficent, the most merciful, this man, Rahman Rani, I, Fatima Karyi, do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so that may be gone.
I, Dr. Harry of Okonkwo, those very swine, the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I, Dr. Ouzan, solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I'm also that report, the first of our hearings here, so there are two that have been stepped down continuously because of other very important matters that come up, Lord said it. And so today again, two reports were stepped down, so I'm not going to present that report as well. And so I apologize on behalf of the committee for such updates. Haven't said that yet. Even in this absence, because we heard sufficiently by the matter before, it was just some issues that came up and felt that we needed the registrar to explain those three areas to us before we conclude on it. But I would, I would yield the time also that we can take, take this out for us to begin. I, Dr. Ouzan, do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so that may be gone. Hello, my distinguished colleague to introduce himself, we call the introduction there on the side.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, our guests, my name is Senator Amayoko Samae Oukoke, and I represent Ojino in the Senate, thank you.
Senator Onera Imaswe, I represent Edo Sasa, Dier district, and the chairman of this committee. So can I have a record? Can I have an introduction on record?
Good afternoon, distinguished senators, and chairman of the committee on ethics called the conduct of petition, Senator Mede Alaswe, and Senator Dr. Samara, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I'm Fatima Karyi, of the registrar of the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria. I'm here with my colleagues which are asked to introduce themselves, thank you.
My, Mr. Bruce, my senator, my name is Dr. Harry of Oukoke, I'm a double registrar and the head of the registrar department of the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria, thank you, sir. It's the, yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, honorable distinguished senator, I get everybody here present. This is Elwizu Anadu, the legal attorney coming to the podium.
Thank you. Is I know that already?
Yes, I am Dr. Ouzan, a medical doctor. I'm a petition handler.
Thank you. All right, this is, this probably is, what, coming, no, second hearing of the second hearing of the matter. For me, it's very straightforward, it's clear, it's just a three years that would mean explanation of. Doctor, the petitioner was here before, what is alleged is that he went to school in Cuba and upon his graduation, he stayed back to do his master's degree. And his colleagues that were with him came back to tell them their master's degree. And when they arrived, they were fully recognized and certified to practice medicine in Nigeria. And so he finished his master's degree, came back, presented himself. Please let him close that door. Present himself with his certificates from the same institutions in Cuba, but that the council now required him to do a petition exams for his medical education. And he thought that was discriminatory and unnecessary. And so he's been fighting to have his, to have his license permitted to practice medicine in Nigeria. And so I'm just looking at the, the street medical professional, the general guidelines of the station. I didn't have, before I had it here, now I'm trying to look at it. But the registrar is here now, I would, I would yield for my colleague to introduce himself. Then have a particular petitioner tell us briefly, so you hear, you're working from here, and then we'll hear your response.
Mr. Bruce? Thanks to you, thank you, buddy. Our guest, my name is Senator Amayoko Busho, now I represent Israel South, thank you.
So can you please start us off with your petition, thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished senators, registrar MDC, and Senator Ime. I'm Dr. Groovy Ozani, I'm in Nigeria from any good states. I am a doctor, I did my basic education here, and a second year medical student of University of Otakok before the registration of Obama Sanrio, I'm in the give of scholarship to pursue our medical career in Cuba, in which we accepted, I left my second year medical career in Potamun, University of Potamun, I left from Cuba. And we studied for, from 2000 to 2017, seven years, we are hungry in the north, so some batch came back to work in Nigeria, they did exams, and worked, so of course, we are giving postgraduate studies.
So did what exams?
The MDCN assessment exam, the seven year base, the one that says it's seven years medical doctors. We are giving postgraduate scholarship by the government to pursue our education, to specialization. I specialized first in family medicine, which ended in 2010, and continued with another specialization with neurosurgery, which ended in 2014, I have masters in, in medicine. So from 2017 to 2014, I was licensed in Cuba, I was that my first license, in MDCN, it's not the fourth that is licensed. I was licensed in Cuba, this is my practicing license, and I came out with, with this my first licensing is just for the copy in Cuba, which I worked from 2017 to 2014. And this letter here is to affirm that this is my license and what letter of good conduct. So in 2017, 14, I finished my second specialization, in which in neurosurgery. I proceeded, I proceeded to London, I stayed in London for three years, in which I stayed in basic studies of observation, with the letters here to affirm it, I finished in 2017. Then I came back for registration, then my colleagues who are fourteen that did the specialization, my colleagues came back, many of them, they didn't go for further observation. So they came back and, and I think that it's coming back, so twelve that came back before me were registered in MDCN in category B, it is in their guideline, this is a guideline to MDCN, which are passing the specialist from Cuba, registering in category B. I have the guide, and this is, so the, the new guideline they printed, they do not talk about category A and B, they just cut it out. The new, the old one, that is the one on 2017, have everything of the categories. In the new one, they take category A and B, but they will not show you who is category A and B, so you will be not enlightened, so they can issue anyhow. So in, I, I came, I showed them, anyway, I came to the MDCN, so that's the story. When I came to MDCN, who introduced me to MDCN, this is a female colleague of mine that came back in 2017 as a medical doctor, not a specialist, he introduced me to Dr. Harry. And I would come to Dr. Harry, saying he will make the, the registration very easy. Okay, I said, there's no problem, I don't know anybody, I've lived in country for seventeen years, I just came back. So I came to Abuja, I met the guy who went to Dr. Harry's office, I would introduce me as his peers, there's no problem. So I started my registration, I saw Mr. Shibu, who asked me of my documentation, this, this, a package here, see this is my certificates, I gave it to him, he registered me in the computer. There, so.
As what?
My certificates.
I'm saying as what, you just tell you as what?
He said bring that to a certificate, I brought it out, he said, he put it in the computer, he said come back.
You register, you tell us or ask?
No, not register, in documentation.
So he took your documents?
Yeah, he took my document.
Okay, he registered your documents?
Yes, he registered my documents, yes, he registered my documents, yeah, in the computer, and told me to come in the next one week or two, I came, he directed me to another office, office of Mr. Tony. Then Mr. Tony asked me which of these documents I'm going to register, you have a lot of documents, two specializations, one masters, a lot of diplomas, anyway, I've consulted with my colleagues, they don't register everything because Nigeria pays you only one. So anyway, I registered some of them, I, I don't register, I wrote some of them, he gave me the paper, go to the bank and put a remitter, and come back, so this is the remitter, he gave me paper, I went to the bank, and I paid MDCN, and in this remitter, you see this full registration, provisional admission, provisional license, provisional, not provisional or additional qualification, in short, everything he said, I go and pay, I pay one hundred and eighty thousand.
Is that your payment?
That is the one that passes over. So this is the one I paid to the government, to MDCN and the government. And this is what my colleague did, so after paying that, I came back and returned the remitter to MDCN. So as I remitter, came to MDCN, he said, come back in next one week or two and collect your licenses. And this is what, how my colleague, twelve months, get registered in category B, and that is what category B saved. So when I came back to Tony, Tony redirected me to Dr. Harry's office, when I came to Dr. Harry's office, anyway, you look at me, you were attending to others, after he said, he said, why are you not calling your peers? I said, I'm calling him, he said, really you're not calling him? I said, really I have problems, I'm not calling, I said, whatever, you have come and presented license. So I left, that's how we ended that meeting, I moved out, I stayed for a week or two, so let some of these, you know, moved out, maybe I'm forgetting you, maybe I'm found out of these reasons. So I came the next two weeks, and unfortunately, when I came to that move of these, there was a poster there, I think with the legs of the head of the department, then I knew that he's inspectorate and he was not the head. So they said they are not working, I should call him the next one week, I came in the next one week, they have finished the funeral of the head of the department, when I came, now Dr. Harry in the head of registration. So when I came to him, he didn't talk about the first, he told me that, eh, that, eh, we have, okay, we changes in MDCN, eh, choosing weight, I said, but I paid, I've done everything as my colleague did, I, I think category B is what I'm supposed to be on. He said, no, wait, you have the great changes, that's how he dismissed me back, I left, I came again, I came once, four times, you were saying the same stories, when I spent five months in Nigeria without doing anything, I pushed him again, I kept telling him this year. So what is wrong, he said, he pushed my certificates to post graduate of Nigeria to analyze. I said, did you post my police post graduate certificates to there? He said, no, I said, what, mine, am I different from my colleagues? And sure, the expert who is coming to Nigeria, do you send their documents to post graduate to analyze? He's not put back in the registerable place, he said, no, there are the great changes, that I pushed there, I pushed there, I understand.
Excuse me, I have, I think I have to stop me a little and ask you a question. Because what, he, he said, Dr. Harry, eh, send your document to post graduate college? But he didn't send your other colleagues?
Yes.
So he's trying to register you as patients, isn't it? When those other colleagues of yours who are registered are ordinary doctors?
No, they are registered as specialists also, sir.
You are sure they were registered as specialist?
Yes, so in the, in the guideline, the specialist are category A and B, but category A is called sometimes. Then category B, you work for three to eight years, if you read the guidelines, because you are, you specialize in not.
Well, let me, let me tell you, I'm asking questions because I'm also a medical doctor.
Yes, sir.
And I'm also a foreign trained, so I think I will understand everything you are talking about much better than most of my friends.
Okay, sir.
And I did my registration at Spa Bar in 1990, and I think we are the first to even start the examination. So whatever you say, if you know that you're talking to somebody who knows, I think you would have to be careful. So that less, less not to complicate matters on something that is very simple. And you have to also understand, our role here is to, our rather call it to arbitrate. I don't want you to think we are just prosecuting anybody, you know, if we can solve the matter, let's see how we can solve it, so that you will go and continue your, and they also continue their work. You understand, we are not trying to pushing blame to anybody, right? So please leave us the information such that will help you solve the problem, all right? Don't look at them as people that you are trying to.
Fight.
To fight, no, that is not the issue. If we can solve this problem here without going anywhere, I think it is better we do that. Continue, continue.
So my colleagues, twelve that came back was specialist, I started to special them. So the way they register is in category B specialist. So category A are those that study in Nigeria, and some American universities, and some London universities. Category B are those from Germany, Netherlands, Cuba, Belgium, in the other country that's not English speaking, and some Canadian universities, and some even England, FMCS, who are still in category B. They need to practice like three or five years, then they move to A, without, not example, just practice the hospital there at the site. So I, as I went, so as I waited for five months, I came and asked Dr. Harry, can I get to post graduate? I don't know what is happening, I'm wasting time here, you know, quite, not doing anything. I went to post graduate of Nigeria, and they accepted, they said, wow, doctor, they were called me, they say, I'm not supposed to be here. That they showed me the guideline again, I showed you category B, I said Cuba is in category B, what MDCN need to do is to register you, you practice, that anybody that need to write the letter to them, it's me, if I want to belong to the post graduate of Nigeria, I wrote to them that I want to belong, that they like that nobody is supposed to write a letter on behalf of me to post graduate, that maybe I have an issue with them or someone there, but nobody have written to them, so that's how they dismissed me. So I went back, I came back to Abuja, I told Dr. Harry, that what, post graduates are supposed to be there, that are supposed to be registered category B, as my colleagues were registered. So he asked me, okay, there are the great changes, but do you have a practicing license somewhere? I think there's another provision in the, in the guideline that puts if you are practicing somewhere before coming. I said, of course, I showed him my practicing license from Cuba, I said, I practiced for seven years, and I gave him my, the letter of good conduct. So anyway, he said, come in next one week, I came in next one week, and the story changed again. So I spent now nine months in Nigeria.
In?
Nigeria, nine good months waiting from 2007 to 2018, yeah.
Nine years, okay.
Ten years, yes, ten years, I spent, ten months, 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 not years. I waited for the license to be released, I came back in June, from London, June, June 2017, then this time I'm talking to you, happened between November, going to post graduate, November, five months later. Then I came back later, February, again, asking him why, that I spent nine to eight, ten months in Nigeria. Then he started to twist, anyway, that the decision is taking long, but if I do the exam, he can use his power to give me my specialization. I said, wow, he said, yes, because waiting for the exam, waiting for the council to decide what they will do with us is going to take long, that he will register me based on the exams, that she can register based on the exam. I said, but, but who did they write exam? Do the expert who is that comes here, that my body condition is better than them, do they write exams? They pass, I've been there, expert who is coming and entering, laughing, smiling, one come there. I said, I'm a Nigerian, I think I have got rights, I'm a post graduate, and the assessment exam is for seven years medical doctors. I've, I've been practicing seven years somewhere, and I've came back, and anyway, that's how that one ended there. Somewhere or the other, I started to beg him, I begged him for long, that he started, he released the license, that is practicing license, a full registration to him, to do my NYC, because my NYC is at hand, he was choking then. So I told him I have not been doing anything, even NYC, ten years, I was waiting for the council to decide. He released, he gave me my full registration and additional, I have practicing license, I did my NYC for one year. After doing it for one year, I came back to him, asking him, I have my full registration and the practicing license, what about my additional qualification, which is the main thing I have, that's what.
Now, let me ask you another question, the full registration is based on what, based on your first degree?
Yes, that's what I finished in 2017.
And you didn't, you didn't do the examination?
No. So I went for my NYC, because NYC demanded it, that before you do NYC, you must have your full registration and license. So after doing it, I came back to him, I asked him, why don't you release my additional qualification? And I finished my NYC, I live in Asoko District Hospital, and I was staying there because there are no neurosurgery in FCT, FCT, eh, FCT, eh, what is it called, the district hospital. I was serving with Kachi, Kachi Kuleto in the United States, so I was now stopped in Asoko as, eh, as the NYC neurosurgery. Because I didn't mind, so I didn't under neurosurgery, my NYC was under neurosurgery, I was operating with Kachi, Kachi Kuleto in the US, I was the only one retained in the four district hospitals of FCT. So when I came to him back in 2019, after I finished my NYC, in 2018, I started, I stopped in 2019. So he told, he said, why don't you do the exam, that I even registered the exam for you, he didn't come in, you are telling these stories, blah, 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 blah. Anyway, I tell him, I'm very sorry, what do you cost you that, and I pay him off what he used to register the exam for me, I gave him the money, then, after he wrote a letter to the FCT, the NHMP, the board of medical doctors in FCT, to assert here as a, that my, that my, my papers have been processed, waiting for the council to see that I can work as a neurosurgeon as I wait for the papers to be released. So that's how I said I might work as a local doctor in FCT, a local doctor that collects hundred thousand every month in FCT. He knew that I'm there, you know very well that I want in FCT, as a local doctor.
Are you still working there?
Anyway, in 2022, the same hearing wrote to FCT Asoko, and told them that Dr. Groovy have come to them as a doctor, but he never regularized his registration, that they should sack me, that they should stop patronizing me. That they, so they did sack me, they say, Dr. Groovy, can you stay down and get solved your, your problem? But the main thing is that I've never been working in an FCT, it's a local doctor that is just, others are collecting each hundred, one million, are collecting hundred thousand, I understand, he's just a local doctor. Whenever I ask them, he say, where's your additional qualification? Where's additional qualification? I have printed all my documents and certificates from Cuba, I have given it to FCT, FMB. What I've taken times, they say, Dr. Groovy, can you print your certificates? I printed, I give it to them in FCT, three times, in 2019 and 2020, I printed all my documents, I'm even giving one to receive it, all the qualifications that make people I am doctor, specialization, I've given it to FCT more than three times, they are acting, acting of it, they act of it, but they didn't do anything. So in 2022, Dr. Harry wrote that, report of a white doctor. Why you report, you know I am there, I'm working, everybody knew, they say that I'm never, that I should stop patronizing me, I should call and regularize my, my, my registration with MDCN, that's what he wrote there. And then I stepped aside, they say I should step away.
All right, doctor, I think it's, I think we've understood so far. Let me just leave, Madam, turn off the mic. Let me, and registrar, one or two days, one day for example, if you are really any responsible to what they are saying. Hold on, sorry, you put that. Let me, let me appear my colleague, the petitioner, to introduce himself, please. Mr. Chairman, Sushkari invited here, Amino Abass, a senator from Adamo, Adamo Sempra, a member of this college. Thank you. But a registrar, he doesn't answer for you, but I must answer the question, you are the staff here. There's anyone that has the information, they can just answer, but I just want a response from what the petitioner have to say, who listen attentively, and I'm also taking a look, taking a good look at this registration, guidelines of registration, to see where it carries, so please respond to us.
Good afternoon once again, distinguished senators, ladies and gentlemen. I listen to Dr. Groovy, this is the, probably the third time I'm hearing his narration. He met me first when I joined the MDCN a few months ago in my office, and he narrated the story. And again, a couple of months ago, he came again to my office, so this is the third time I'm hearing. I would just like to give as a bit of a background on what the MDCN does in terms of registration of foreign trained medical doctors. We actually appreciate the input of federal government in giving scholarships to students that train abroad and they come back. Well, as it is practised anywhere in the world and also enacted in our act of the Medical and Dental Practitioners Act of the Lords of the Federation of 2004. Any foreign trained medical doctor that returns to Nigeria must write an assessment exam at the discretion of the registrar.
At the discretion?
Yes, the registrar can, if they didn't fit, they will to say they don't have to. But it is in section, nine subsection, one subsection. And that will tell us that, um, anybody that comes from abroad, but standard practice. If today I go to the UK, I'll write the exam, I have to practise. So any foreign trained medical doctor comes to Nigeria has to have the MTC assessment exam. The assessment exam can be waived if the person comes in as a specialist, has trained as a specialist. Equivalent to the National Medical College Specialist. And that will be determined by the National Medical College, what that specialist is. Sometimes before now, if it's the Royal College of, um, the UK perhaps, we already know that we have a standard. So it's not interrogated, but when it is new, it is interrogated. When Dr Groovy came to register, I was not a registrar at the council. But from the notes I read after he came to meet me. First of all, I only gave him audience because he came to seek redress. But as far as I'm concerned, up to today, as I'm talking to you, I do not recognise Dr Groovy as a registered medical practitioner in Nigeria, because he is not on my register. So when I checked his notes and I discovered that number one, there has been some discussion about him. And his specialist training was interrogated by the National Medical College. Both the neurosurgical training and the family medicine training. And both of them were returned to the council to say that they are not equivalent. And he is not eligible to be registered for additional qualification as a specialist under those subjects. The council now decided that since he cannot be registered as a specialist, that means he cannot do full registration without provisional. That means he can do the assessment exam, sorry, not full registration without provisional. He cannot be registered as a specialist. But he can do full registration without provisional based on the, um, what he had done in, in, um, Cuba. But with the assessment exam, which is standard. So I understand from the notes that two of his other colleagues that came at the same time or around the same time with, um, with, um, some specialist certificates were also deemed not registrable for additional qualification. And they were asked to write their exams and they did and they were registered. His previous colleagues who had come just with the MTO, you know, had all written their exams. Some of them, it took them two or three times to write their exams and they did and they were registered. And they have since been processed. So now back to Dr Groovy. I also understand that his case was also transmitted to the Nigerian police. So it has become a case that is under the investigation of the police. And we have been, um, collaborating with them, cooperating with them. If they ask for any information, we give them. The last correspondence with them must have been in September. They were asking for information and practicing licenses of others and we gave them all. So it's still under the investigation with the police. So when he came back to me in October, I told him that I cannot interfere with any investigations done by the police. But I can do one thing and that is review his case thoroughly. And I set up a panel, I began to set up a review panel. I called top specialists in neurosurgery, professors in neurosurgery to be part of the panel. Professors of medicine to be part of the panel. And I had just finished writing the terms of reference and emailed to the corresponding, um, relevant doctors. And then the petition from the National Assembly, Senate came. And that now would have to supersede my action. So I stayed on that action so that we can hear what you will decide. Thank you very much, sir.
Who took, who took, who took the matter to the police and why?
Uh, maybe Dr Henry can answer that.
Captain Boyner, sir, um, for this big pleasure, I'd like to comment on this. Um, who said? I, I was employed by the council, what do you have?
You're supposed to go straight to the point, the answer to the question.
Alright, sir. Now, when Groovy, who took the matter? If the council, registrar.
Under what, um? He asked why? Why?
Why?
Why?
So, we, there were reports that Groovy was in Asokoro Hospital. So registrar called me and asked me, I said, okay, I will talk with him. I called him off phone because we were looking like brothers that Groovy come.
You are here.
Yes, sir. You said, you told me that I was going to do NYC in the east with receipt. I said, the note that you used for NYC, it was good registration. He said, I said, but even if I have to arrest you. So when that one came, I told him, say, why are you working in Asokoro? What are you doing there? You know, he said that he just can't do some observation and not do the water, leave there, there's nothing good there. But six months, he didn't leave. They should also catch the lack then, to disengage him from this, I shouldn't be there, what, he has a license. He now, he now came to my office, attracting many tenants, uh, that, uh, they, they want to register the registrar. It was a person who seen the registrar that, or one of the things that he came in as, so many people came, came with him, there were so many people, they were doing the same thing. He announced to me that he has a license, as he's saying that he has personal and full registration. Yes, he asked, okay, break it, let me see. He now brought that license, that was the first one, I seen it for the first time. Someone called me as head of the department to go and check out that license. When I checked, I saw the license, every doctor has a unique locker. Every doctor has a unique locker, fully locker. The non-registered license belongs to another person, who is in a firm. I told him that this license, it was not registered, that license was cloned somewhere. Yes, it's not.
So that license was not issued by?
No, it's not issued, yes, from our system.
Was forged?
Yes, sir. So he asked, okay, that if he comes next time, I should take him to police. So he now later came and the director of registrar came to call me that. The registrar, that, that Groovy, the registrar should take to police, I asked him to go to my office, I said that. There was not Groovy and Andre and everything. So I told the, I said, that's what I can do, I'll grab it, but the director that he gave me, who has some several defensive in the office, they should take me to the police. They took me to the police and go, he went there, later he left him, he said it was okay. Then he kept coming around to, he thought I was acting alone, I tried to register him and go. So they now go to another guy again to the, uh, police again, they now also attacked him again. It was at that time, I went to the police, he told that I was the one that gave him that license. That's what, just to put him in trouble. So a police called me, I went to the police. They would, they talked after a long, they didn't register then, they didn't register, went to the police, there are no statements, everything was there. So I don't know, the day, the police didn't see anyway, the way he was making the word. Spreading to him because he said, comments was on him, I have been there for many years. And now, as he says, if he doesn't do the exam, I don't register him. And that put him, if he doesn't understand, she said, if you don't understand, why do they put him to register him? So we're at that point, when, uh, the new registrar now was, you know, came aboard. So I agreed to have that situation and she wasn't inclined to, trying to say what to do about the situation. Because there were reports from those medical colleges, he invited to us to say these things and he said, also I submitted the two, also in the fight there. That this certificate are not registrable. You know, so he said that he went there, actually, he went, he went to National College. But he told me, is there any other way I can be registered in this country? I said, you have to go and meet at National College or Central College yourself. If they evaluate you and place you at five, you complete your training with them, then you, they will, they will, they can be registering. He came back later and told me that there's a small, that someone that was too late there, you know, that he told him to, uh, that, 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 that. They normally do outreach to assess the exceptional skills, I think it's okay. On that strength, that was why I gave him later, he said he want to have knowledge of the original, tropical, original skills and express in the country, so he can do well in that. That's the strength that I would have given that, but normally people, letters.
One letter, one letter?
Gave him a letter?
Yes, a letter to, when people come back from.
A letter to where?
To Asokoro Hospital.
To, to do what?
To, he want to rotate, go on, there's a lot of trace stuff there. So when they take him for outreach in their system, they can see how we would have those, uh, tropical skills there and do well with them. They may give them the certificate, completely, completely studying with them and they're satisfied to come and register with us.
Alright, thank you. Um, turn off the mic, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, distinguished colleagues, my name is Senator Chakravarti, I represent Kandam, Kandam District, the Vice Chairman of this college.
Thank you. Madam, of, of interest to me, you mentioned certain rule. You, you mentioned, I don't know, nine or something, or the particular rules that gives you discretion.
The medical, the medical, the medical.
Is it this one?
No.
Two, ah, also, who's that?
They act, no, they don't have to act, I believe.
Do, do you have a copy, can I see please, can you?
Just go, go back.
No, I want to see, I want to see. Maybe this, you can see.
Some A, you see, referred to specialisation, examinations, registrations.
So it is, this is not actually discretion, you know? He has to also make this application there before Kalimori, right? He says, he says, uh... Okay, it says here, that's your registration in Medical and Dental Practices Act, cap N eight. Um, section eight, subsection two. Subject to offset, the person shall be entitled to registrar, to register any prescribed qualification. If the application, if the qualifications approved by the council in a specialized branch of medicine or dental surgery. Nine. Subject to this provision, section eight. Any course of training which is intended for persons who are seeking to become already members of the medical or dental profession and which the council considers is designed to confer on person completing its sufficient knowledge and skill for the practice of that profession or for practice as members of specialized branch of that profession.
I think it's, uh, registrar. She will say it, all other, uh, graduates, medical graduates that come from outside are subjected to exams before they, you find them qualified, right?
No, before you register them.
Before you register them?
Practicing Nigeria.
All?
Yes, except for those that come as specialists.
Okay, is he a special, specialist?
So that is the question.
Yes.
Uh, I, um, let me be, let me. If it's a standard and I know that Cuban doctors are supposed to be well-trained doctors. And the environment as we hear, never been to Cuba. And it's such that it's subject to, to thorough training. Dr Groovy, if you have gone through what you said you went through in Cuba, why are you afraid of, uh, going for the exams? It's just to test your competences. And I'm sure this council decided to do, do that because of what is being practised in the world and particularly around us today. There is a university in Kotolukia that people go for six months and come back with degrees of, I mean, uh, lawyers and doctors that are supposed to spend five years, seven years in, uh, uh, well-established institutions. And so for, uh, our institutions to find out that, yes, you really went through what you said you went through. They will have to test your competences and if you are worthy on you, I don't think we should fear any, uh, any test or any, uh, subjection of, uh, your competences. So why are you afraid of going for the exams?
Professor, I can give you to your comment.
Yes.
Let me just add a comment. Um, I understand it of the whole thing is, there are, we have two issues here. You can be discharged as specialist. If you come as a specialist, but because of where you come from, that is as at a discretion of the registrar, am I right? The registrar will decide whether she is satisfied, we is satisfied, that yes, you can be registrar. If she or he is not satisfied, you have to be sent to postgraduate medical college to further assess you before they can register you as specialist. Otherwise, you can only be registrar and as ordinary doctor after going through the examination, am I correct? Correct? That is the position of this situation, but I wonder why Groovy failed to.
Maybe they didn't tell us, no, yes, no, they, I will also.
Well, I just want to know why, all this why you failed to even take the first examination. Let, don't, don't, don't bother about your other colleagues. When I came back 1989, I didn't, I didn't do the examination. So those that came back 1990 were subjected to the examination. Because the, the examination started 1989, but we escaped it. So we started work now, but 1990 they started. So if we said, we came 89, they didn't, uh, uh, check us, I mean, that is wrong. They, they started to start the examination 1990. Is that any reason why you don't want to take the exam?
Thank you for giving a question.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on.
Uh, thank you, Chairman, distinguished colleagues. Uh, guests, I'm Nasiru Sanzangadura, I represent the Senate.
Alright, um, will you ask question? Both of you. Yeah, okay. This was, thank you, our response certainly. I think the registrar is not going straight to the court. Those that registered are those that came in nineteen seventy as doctors. Now, we are fifteen in number that the government extended our scholarship for postgraduate to become specialists. Twelve of them came back before me. They were registered without exams in category B. Even in twenty seventeen, I came back. I graduated in fourteen, some graduated in seventeen, twelve of them were registered in seventeen without exam in category B. We are fifteen, twelve came back, was registered in council as specialists. Comments five, six, they started to receive their salary.
Without exam?
Without exam.
That's one of them, twelve?
Twelve, I'm number thirty. The one that didn't.
So it's one, fifteen that went?
Fifteen that went, yes. So twelve came back before me, although I graduated the four, the four, some of them, but I went to learn them to follow my observation in, in studying. So those that came back, came back just from studying, they, they didn't do extra study or observation like me. I suppose to be back here twenty fourteen, at this point have been happening. Because they would have followed the guideline, there's a guideline, the one they give you here is the new guideline, it's the same thing with this one. But the thing is that they cut out, in the, in the old guideline, you see category A and B. From there, you see category A, what makes category A, which countries is in category A? And which countries is category B, this one and who is the guidelines, separate guidelines. But the problem is the back of categories. In this one, you are holding, they don't, they tell you category A and B, but they don't tell you who is category A and who is category B. They don't want you to know. So the council have, from twenty fourteen, made this guideline. This one was, I think they started this one twenty twenty, they sent it this twenty twenty, and remove the back part of it. That shows you the category C T H. Then you see that Cuba is in category B. So everybody that studied in Cuba as specialists, they put it here. Specialist certificate from Cuba in category B, eligible to register.
Alright, let me ask, let me ask, what I consider for the mental question. With, so you are telling us that you were, you were a specialist, you specialized in Cuba.
Yes.
What was your specialty?
Two, even I.
No, no, okay. I was, I was a specialist.
I'm a, now, I'm a neurosurgeon, but I'm a family doctor.
So, hold on, your specialization certificate from Cuba says what? Neurosurgeon?
Yes.
Neurosurgeon?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a certification from Cuba which says.
I'm a neurosurgeon.
You are neurosurgeon.
Yes. Now, my colleagues, is he?
No, 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 stop, stop.
Yes, sir.
So when you come back, or when you came back. Were you supposed to take that same certification or certificate to the postgraduate, uh, to the postgraduate institution?
Yeah.
For then to cert, no, how, who certifies who?
No, there's a guideline.
No, 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 no.
Which guideline?
Hold on, so, so I'm a lawyer.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm telling everybody I'm a doctor. And I'm here with some certificates. And the certificate needs with guidelines. So they should give me a license to practice that same? No. They shouldn't. So because I'm asking you.
Yes, sir.
You came back from Cuba with degrees of specialization.
Yes, sir.
In neurosurgery.
Yes.
Did you take that same certificate to the postgraduate here for them to, to certify, to say, yes, we recognize the school over there? Yes, the school had written back to us that you actually obtained this certificate. And therefore it forced you to your category B.
Yes, sir.
And so therefore they give you the license. Did you do all that?
Yes, sir.
So you are some from postgraduate college here?
This thing you are asking, sir, excuse me, is done by M D C N. I have paid for postage, leave fee, everything in actual are paid for. The twelve that was registered have paid the same money, they send their certificate to Cuba, they confirm it, they bring it back. And they register them. So this is the payment I pay here, M D C N, eight thousand.
So hey, you see postage? It's okay. It's okay, madam. Madam, so we are actually trying to, trying to be very careful and to be thorough with this matter. We do so because we are talking about doctors. And so want to be sure that, um. That we are, we are talking about qualification, qualified doctors. Now. Has the council, has the regular council, the boy, have they been able to confirm? With his school in Cuba, to confirm whether or not he actually possesses, certificate possesses?
Thank you, sir. Um, distinguished senators, my brother. Senator Sanizanga Bora, you're welcome, sir. In twenty eighteen. His certificate of, um. Faculty of Surgery for Neurosurgery was sent to the National Postgraduate Medical College of Nigeria. To check the equivalence. Empowered by the Act, Section nine, subsection one, subsection C. And the response from the college said. Please refer to your letter on the above subject matter. I am directed to inform you that the Faculty of Surgery of the National Postgraduate Medical College of Nigeria. Has criticized the curriculum and course contents submitted by the applicants and found that. The qualification and curriculum submitted by Dr. Ozaini Gouve and Ezzi. Is not suitable for registration as a specialist neurosurgeon in Nigeria. Thank you. Yours, thank you.
Does, does he have a copy of that letter? Do you have a copy of that letter?
The copy of this letter?
Yes.
The name is Ruby, but I was giving it to, they were giving it to me in the main shop house.
That's fine, but you are aware, so you are aware of it?
Yes.
Is that, is that on your mind?
Father, sir.
Yes.
If I may continue. A similar letter was requested for the second specialist area that he presented, which is of family medicine. And it says the same thing. I am directed to inform you that the Faculty of Family Medicine, so is the second faculty of the college. Has scrutinized the curriculum and course contents submitted by the applicants and concluded that the qualification. And curriculum submitted is not equivalent to the Fellowship of Family Medicine in Nigeria. As designed by the National Postgraduate Medical College of Nigeria. Furthermore, the Faculty of Family Medicine is unable to make further determination. Of the status of this certificate or degree. The certificate is at best an additional knowledge. Signed by the college registrar.
Uh, hold on, do you have a copy of, of the, are we sure we have a copy of this?
Yes, sir.
Do you have it? Do you call it, do you call it, do you call it? Come and say. Set up a committee to, into this all, so that it can be, um, better guided. And the committee have not sat because of this, because of this petition.
Yes.
Of your own experience.
No, I, sorry for coming late, but I just, I heard him saying when I came in that he is a neurosurgeon. So what then does that have to come device? Are you also a qualified?
Yes, sir. I did family medicine for. In Cuba before, um, after doing seven years. And every doctor in Cuba, they present to family medicine, before you start to choose another specialty. So if you stuck in main family medicine, some of my colleagues, one of my colleagues is a director in, in, in main shop health. They just studied family medicine and came back for three years, three, four years. But after finishing it, I stayed back and continued to study for seventy years.
No, so they just answered, no, no, you answered it, that's fine. Alright, uh. Like I said before. The sudden this committee, we're not here to impose any directives on any institution. That is, that has its own rules and regulations. The only thing we do is to make sure that these rules or regulations are followed as are laid down. So nobody is discriminated against for whatever reason. So we're not trying to join. But this letter, this letter from, from the other council. Arriving at their conclusion, will carry my own hands, will carry my hands to do anything other than. To look at this letter really very carefully and to make sure. You know, I'm not, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a specialist, even if I were a doctor. This letter will have to say something different, because we can also do something different. For me. I was almost. Going to the point of saying, why would your colleagues be giving license to practice and yours not be much license to practice? That's why. But I also asked myself that for years you've been fighting this, you would have written this exams already. And be given your license to practice. So that's also playing in my head. And now I have this letter, that same category to, that, that specialty that you see you have. That is not in the hand of, with the regulations of that body, of the body that regulates. That regulates. That specialty in this country. And if that is the case, maybe we should go back to the original. Go back to the original, um. Requirement that you sit for, sir. But before we come, I come to that conclusion. I want to. And join the registrar to please continue with that, um. With that committee setup. So that we can be so thorough and fair to say that every institution that is seized. With this knowledge and understanding of the matter, have looked at it exhaustively, and this is their contribution. So I will plead that you continue with that. And if it's concluded, we want to see the result of that, of that inquiry.
As it pleases the committee, sir.
Thank you. Tell me.
Except for the fact that, uh, I think this question consistently has not asked, why is it you don't, we didn't, sorry. Why is it, because the question has been cropping up. But why is it that you don't want to write the exams that you have not answered up to now? Excuse sir, um, I'm not a forced neurosurgeon. My colleague, we did exam the same day, he's a registered neurosurgeon practicing in Nigeria. Was registered in December twenty sixteen. We did exam the same day. I know colleagues of mine, even those that graduated twenty sixteen, I graduated twenty fifteen, that is practicing in Nigeria. And this letter was not written on them, am I different? Am I discriminating? Postgraduate told me that nobody should write on my behalf to them. That they set a guideline that they follow. So why should someone, if that someone do like me in the system, that's why they are right? Who, who does he like in the system? Why things are weird, he's that.
Your, your mic please. I'm very blown, I think you're in denial. This is what I think, I think you're in denial, I think, look, they are the regulators of things. So us, what we need to do, what we do here is to ensure that they have followed their own guidelines. Their set mandate, and from what we see here, there is nothing that degrades from that mandate. So that's why I said you're denial, the thing is, accept what is going on here. Accept the fact that we're giving you advice to go and, and do the proper thing that you should do. You are not registered, you're not registered. Go and get registered, this is what I'm telling you.
Excuse sir, can I ask something? Can I ask you, can I ask you?
Don't ask us a question?
No, just convenient. The thing I, one of the problem I have is that, when I came back, they told me to pay one seventy-eight. I paid, I came to collect license, they say go and call your fiancee and come and collect your license. It's one of the things that makes me not to, that's why he say that. Now, every colleague of mine paid this money, full registration, professional admission. Why should you tell me to pay this? You're someone to tell me to do the exam, pay for the exams. You have admitted me to pay, following the guidelines, I paid for what I'm asking here.
Your colleagues, are they special, are they, are they also special, uh, specialists?
Yes, they are, they are working.
They are some specialists.
Like me, we in the same school, we are fifteen from the same school, twelve came back.
Have you told, you told me, you can remember very well, you said you stayed back to do the postgraduate course?
No, we are fifteen that stayed back to do postgraduate, government sponsored it. Twelve came back after the postgraduate. I have a thirteen that came back. Twelve is working here, registered with M D C N.
Without the exams?
Without the exams, think this thing.
I just, I just say alive.
They asked them.
No, I don't ask them, I ask them.
Yes, sir, they are lying, oh, they are lying, oh, you are lying.
Can you look at me?
Yes, sir.
I just say alive.
They are alive.
Okay, one, one that have killed it for all of them. Unapparently, sought in court that, yes, they went to school with you in Cuba. Obtained the same certificate as you did, returned to Nigeria, authorizing the exams and the license, bring them. If you bring them, they game turn, game turn you.
No, they can tell this.
And I'm not telling you, no, no, you are the petitioner. If you are led, so you must prove it.
I want to make my decision.
I want to make what?
My decision, so that's what I'm saying.
Okay, who are they?
Thank you, sir. Um, the people that said they were registered, they came before him, they didn't come when he came. At, at some time, the council sat and started to review the guideline on registration. That's the point I have, they reviewed it, and that's what the company that were using that.
So they changed?
Yes, it changed.
What kind of change?
So, so, and when he came also, he only did comment, they were three that came, they were three of them that came.
So they felt.
So, so, no, those, other people wrote the exam, they passed.
Okay.
And they are registered.
So thank you, tell us in my, see, our colleagues that just left. It's an F D of, it's a medical doctor of, of reputation and, uh, spirit. He just said the same thing, that when he came, he escaped it, he didn't write the exam. But his colleagues who came, less than a year after him, had to write the exam because the guideline had changed. They had to write the exam. And that seemed to be the situation with you. That seemed to be the situation with you. My advice, or our advice is this, you are wasting precious time, your precious time. Can you just be sit, write the exam and get it over with? That's what I would do if I were in your shoes, because we can't go outside their regulations, we cannot. We, we cannot begin to set regulations for, for, for medical doctors, lawyers and all that. We can't, they have their own guideline, they have their own regulation, and they are guided by it. Like I said before, if their guideline appear to discriminate over it or anything we do, then we'll step in and rectify that. But that don't seem to be the case yet. The last thing we're here, that's why I insisted that the great surgeon come and tell us. Great area, sir, can understand exactly what it's all about. And I think he has done so, 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 so. So, um, still, myself.
You see, I have to write the exam.
Hello, uh, doctor.
Are you trying to write the exam? Yes, you are, sir. Why, sir?
I'm not happy to write the exam.
So why, why you go to?
What is it? I, I want, I did write, why I did write the exam is because I suspect, I'm suspecting that I will pass it. And it's very clear when they report to the police that my certificate is fake, the license is fake. L B I have concluded the investigation, this is.
L B, sir.
L B, L B, call me, I will give.
It's a certificate, eh?
Eh?
It's a certificate, eh?
Eh?
Is it fake?
It's not fake, what he said is fake.
You are sure it's not fake? There's more other exams.
Eh?
Yes.
Ah, sir.
Ah, sir. Exam is not my problem.
All right, that's okay. But don't feel mind. Um, having exhausted, look at this matter and then written on it with both parties, adducing their, conversing their points, it is the view of this committee that the petitioner, Mr. Groby Ouzwani, Doctor Ouzwani, should consider writing the exam so that it can be registered. In the meantime, we are also enjoining the registrar, who has settled emotion, emotion to, of the committee to look into the affairs, to continue with that. And then, after this committee, the report of that committee, asks to the eligibility of Doctor Groby Ouzwani to be registered without writing the exams. And that will be the decision of this committee. And after I did, go and write the exams, if you fail, report to us, we'll investigate. Doctor Rigande? Did the Rigande expire? That's you.
Ah, M P Wapa. We are in the same, we are in the same firm, we are working in the same, strong, conversant in the facts.
You are conversant with facts. But the worst, worst is such buyer, that, that's you. Then, what's the position?
Uh, the head of admin.
Head of admin, yes. So just in a brief, just tell us again. Those, those, the, makes.
Counselor Varam, this is which I've shown you, about the, the senators and the senators, we are here at the presence. We file a petition on the, uh, wrongful, illegal dismissal of, uh, Adam Rossick Komiko of Nada, by the executive secretary of Nada. However, we want to state that the late, the dismissal, there is an issue at hand, the letter of dismissal was not particularly signed by the executive secretary. The letter was signed by the, uh, head of admin, head service. There are, the head of admin is not even a director in that ministry. There are several other directors. But the person signing the dismissal letter is neither the executive secretary of Nada nor any other director, but the head of admin, which does not have the power, the secretary power to, to dismiss an employee of Nada. The, 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 the same person, the same person that sacked the petitioner previously, uh, issued a query and the query, the two queries that was issued, the, the petitioner answered the query and then stated categorically clear his reasons why he was not able to, the first query was why the letter was sent, the letter was not sent particularly to him. The letter was addressed to the director of Carina Motors, whose head office is in Carina, that to, to take away five generator, five trucks and one mechanical generator that was sent to Alabama State, uh, to Nada in Alabama States. But the coordinator, the one, the best, the, 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 the coordinator was not aware that the letter, the people came from Carina to come and carry the vehicle. And he said that he was not aware, on placing the call, they said, yes, that, uh, they were the people that said, they said, okay, but he is incapacitated to, to release those things because there's a pending court case and the court, and the court already had already given an order even before he was appointed. That matter was in court before he was given a, an appointment to work with Nada. And the matter was still in court as at the time he was sacked and a, and a court order was issued. They not, out the date, that court order, there is no, there is no court of competent jurisdiction that have set aside that order. However, the order of court is, until it is set aside by a superior court that understands. And the court has given order that no property, nothing whatsoever of Nada should be taken from the premises of Nada in Alabama States. So the petitioner does not have any power to ask otherwise. Doing otherwise would mean that he's, he's already, he's, he's, he, he, there is con, con content, there is con content. Then, the, the sack letter that you, on the, the, the second, the second, the second, uh, uh, query was on the basis that he was transferred. While this issue was happening, he was transferred from Madara to, to, to Abuja within a short period of time. He said he was supposed to, the transfer came on the second and he was to resume before, uh, is it eleventh February, eleventh January. But he was, when the, the, even the transfer came, he also was not, uh, he, he was sick and has gone to a place for a medical, sick medical treatment, which he does, the, the, he had a network area. And so he didn't get the information on time. And on getting the information, when he came to the network area, on getting the information, he responded to them immediately. The reason why he was not able to resume, uh, in Abuja at the particular time that, uh, that the, the, uh, the transfer came in. So what we are saying is that his, his dismissal is illegal. The person that signed the dismiss, the dismissal letter does not have the, the two, three power to do so. That is our, uh, that is our, that is, that, that is our challenge before this, uh, distinguished committee.
So, uh, so of your, so our issues are two things. One, there's a court order which ordered them not to take the equipment from Madanwa State on the date. They're sending court order.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Second issue is that, as a result of all of this, your client was dismissed.
Yes, sir.
Um, ma'am, do you have any?
And our challenges are the person.
Okay, please. Ma'am, can you respond to that?
Distinguished chairman of the committee and other distinguished senators, my name is Ali Mamamandara F S I. Yes, as you rightly said, I'm the head of admin and health services. Nada didn't have any directors, I was a deputy director. I recently sat for my directorate exam and I passed. I'm just waiting for the letter to come to, for me to return my director. Nada is a small organization. We had four deputy directors. When now three of, three of us have passed our directorate exams and that can be easily confirmed.
Are you the one that signed the certain letter?
Yes, I signed it and I also signed his appointment letter. I don't know whether, why that was not an issue because he accepted that because I signed the, uh, the appointment letter. So the next is, he was giving queries quite all right and, and I would like to remind you, uh, the, the distinguished committee that he's still on probation. He would have still been on probation, um, the two years probationary period. And on his appointment letter, it did say that the point is that if it is established to the satisfaction of Nada that you're not qualified for efficient service, your appointment may be terminated. And even without that clause, we all know the administrative, uh, processes. When someone is on probation, they can be summarily dismissed. The, the former executive secretary did not attend any, uh, disciplinary committee. We had our heads of departments were all members of the disciplinary committee and we sat several times regarding his case. He was given his first query, he was given his query and was given three days to respond. He didn't respond until ten days later. We had to send him a letter to remind him and then he responded. The same thing with the second query, he didn't respond on time. When he was posted, and I'm not hearing new news, because the last time that we sat here and from the documents here, his reason for not going for his posting initially was because he had aged and sick parents. And today, today is the first time I'm hearing that he's the one that was sick. So I don't know which one is the right, correct thing. He was given his letter, they're all here, to move to Abuja on the eighteenth of December. He didn't respond, he didn't say anything until the eleventh of January, when we sent him a letter asking why he had not reported. We had sent somebody from headquarters to report to Adamah to take over from him. He too, he went the following day on the nineteenth of December. All these are here in the, uh, the submission that we did. So this is someone that is on probation and the sitting here, we're, we're, we're trying to say that what they're saying, that it's unjustified, unlawful and malicious. This is what I'm trying to say, that this is not true. Um, his dismissal was not unjustified, it's not unlawful. He signed the, uh, appointment that he can be dismissed. And he didn't walk, he didn't come to where he was posted. He could have come. He could have come and said, please, he has these challenges. And then we would have done something, but he just ignored us and not even a, a text message or anything until he was reminded almost a month later. And then that was when he said he has challenges. Then the disciplinary committee now met. He didn't come to report until the fifth of February.
From?
From Adamah.
So from what date?
From eighteenth of December.
He didn't come until the fifth of January?
Of February.
Of February?
Yes. And this is someone that is on probation. All these caps are being taken, even if it's a comprehensive, simple servant, they're all grounds for dismissal. But he's on probation and we try to extend, you know, our arms so that he would be given all the chances so that it wouldn't lead to this, but unfortunately it has.
Well, what about the appointments? There's a court order who says you shouldn't move those appointments.
I was not aware of that court order, sir.
You were not served of any court order?
I, I was not aware. I, if our legal person was, um, occupied, we would have come with him and he might have been able to clarify that.
Okay, um, you know, the last time, uh, I made a statement and I told you, all this happened because we asked him not to allow those trucks to go. That's where we should pray to him. And after that, they told you, I have a statement here, you say it, first time senators. You are the, you are the, the wood ready. Now, coming, these pictures are there Nada's truck.
Sorry?
These pictures?
Yes.
Are they the trucks?
Yes, they belong to Nada.
Are they those trucks that were taken from Adamah?
I'm not sure because they were taken to Carra Motors and then this new E S R.
We asked you, we asked you to tell us why those trucks are.
They're in Quara.
Are they those trucks?
I believe they are.
Do they have Nada, Nada neighborhood?
I'm not sure.
The trucks that are taken from Adamah has Nada, to Nada neighborhood. All of them, I have pictures. I have way back.
We have more pictures here.
These trucks have gone under the hood. And I told you to know what happened. And even the director, you said, this new director was taken from Adamah. The one that was taken from Adamah is here, it's on this one. This director was taken from Adamah, he's changed. What do you have to say of this?
As far as I'm concerned, you said you wanted to see the mechanical, uh, generator house.
The director that was taken from Adamah, this is the one that was taken from.
So that was the one that we were told that was taken to, uh, Carra Motors. And as I mentioned the last time we were here, it required of the executive secretary to move the equipment where.
But this equipment doesn't belong to Nada because they don't have Nada neighborhood. This one's a, that's what I'm asking you. And this one has Nada neighborhood, oh. Yes, it's a, it's a, this is Nada. But do you want to, they're bringing now, that's Nada. You just take pictures of trucks anywhere.
Yes, they're taking them now from, in Quara.
Yeah. The ones you pick for Adamah has Nada neighborhood. That's why I say, those who are the sports, you are not going to that this way. You too, they, you saw it. I don't know, I'm a light off. So because he reported to you, us, you decide to give a query. And decide again, when the former chairman of Nada was seeing Nada, he told him, he told him not to report. Let me tell you today, he told him not to report until the case is resolved. And then he was sacking him after that, even after his petition. We refuse to take action earlier because the chairman that was, was, that, that was seeing Nada, asked us not to take any action. We have every evidence, all the numbers we have of the trucks. And I am sure they're not in Nada position now. We'll get to you.
Thank you. I'm still okay, my, my. Um, let me come back again to the court order. Did you serve it on them?
Yes, very right. They are.
Do you have, do you have evidence of service, please?
Yes, the court order.
No, do you have evidence that that court order, that they shouldn't move those practices from Madanwa?
Yes.
If you serve it on them, can I see evidence of proof?
In fact, it is the court order in one of the reds rooms.
And look, you are a lawyer now, you serve, you serve a process.
Yes, sir.
Right, there's a process to that.
Yes, sir.
Hey, so I want to see that, that you serve it on them.
Okay. Yes, eh, may I refer eh, I think they. There's evidence from the, on the first paragraph.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
Don't give me a narrative. What you are giving me, I've not seen it, but you're hearing what I'm saying, what you want to give is a narrative. You, you are a lawyer.
Yes, sir.
And so you understand what I'm saying? Yes, I serve a process on an individual in corporation, right?
Yes, sir.
There's a procedure followed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I, can I proceed the court process, the, the court order?
Where is the order?
Per se, can I just see the court order per se? So, over a report, you are. Did, was it served on them?
Yes, it was served on them, sir.
And it's.
It was served on, it was served, the, it was served on the executive secretary, the former executive secretary that resigned, it was served on him, he is very well aware of this matter, it was served on personally.
Um.
The petitioner is here, but he's the one that served the executive secretary personally, I'm sorry.
Okay, talk to us, how did you serve it?
When the human is go to court order, I send it to years to do what's wrong.
What's wrong? So that's not the service, right?
Yes.
So the top of it, so are you really the most? All right, do you, do you have a, are you hearing this?
Yes, excuse me.
Are you hearing this for the first time?
No, that is a, that is.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing. I'm not hearing, not hearing.
That is the modus operandi, they operate in disseminating informations. They said even, even the query that was served on him was sent, it was through WhatsApp. But where he was, because it didn't there, I imagine that he did not respond on time and come inside.
I know, I'm asking, you're trying to justify what I hear, it does, it does.
All their complications are.
None of your, none of your, after some concern. After some concern.
Is there a response?
They will not serve eh, so.
Is there a response for, by the age of, uh, this, this?
I don't care. You cannot, it's a court order.
Yes.
You cannot receive a court order from the court. Where did you, where, where is their office? You know the office in, in, in Adamawa, right? In your.
Yes, sir.
You know where the office is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this, this case, this, this court is also in Adamawa, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, so you see this court process, this court order, restraining order, very important.
Yes, sir.
Restraining order. Instead of you to go to that office and serve it on them, you decide to snap it into your phone and forward it and you're telling me that's, that's, that's official as a doctor's.
Yes, eh, distinguished eh, distinguished chairman, sir. When the order was given, immediately the order was given, the, 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 the state director informed the former executive secretary and subsequently, sir, subsequently, sir, the, 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 the original copy of eh, the, the original copy was handed over to the former executive secretary for the calling. But not immediately, it was after eh, this, the, 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 the coordinator snapped and sent it. Then subsequently.
The soon when the court order was given and when the executive, the director was giving to the court of the order. Will you say it was twenty-four hours, twenty-eight hours, one, two weeks, one month?
It was about, it was after two weeks.
After two weeks?
Before the, the original copy that was served on them was handed over to the former executive secretary.
Okay, who is no longer in service?
Who is no longer in service.
Okay, ma'am, is there anything on your record that indicates that eh?
Sir, I cannot tell you for sure right now. If we have come with a legal officer, then we could have checked to see because that's the legal department.
Can you make a phone call? Lawyer, do you serve eh, couple of those?
Yes.
That's about what I'm saying.
No, no, no.
Yes, sir.
You got it, yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes.
When was the, this was just for the.
Yes, sir, what happens now is that most, most people are going away from service. Most people are going away from service. So the court demand for their WhatsApp number.
And give him email, email.
Once it is posted, it is deemed. Given that process, so that they don't escape.
Yes, I respond.
Yes, yes, yes.
Right, right.
Yes, email also. If you text me, you can take this, you know, nobody is.
What were you saying?
New court order, whether you check him out, this is a new court order.
How, 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 how do you manage this?
Continue, I'm sorry.
Hello?
Yes, continue.
Hello?
Continue.
So I'm not aware of eh, any of the court today. Or they are about to bring the, 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 any of the two hundred and fifty. I do not have a way of making sure to check. And I'm.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
All right. And who is this, 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 this same receiver, the coordinator was the coordinator?
I'm done.
Oh, the court gave it to you?
Yes.
And make yourself for it?
Yes.
And then you WhatsApp it?
Yes.
It's a culture of WhatsApp.
Yeah.
It's a culture of WhatsApp. Anyway, so let me ask, as you guys are in the field. This was, when, when did that, this, this new procedure, when did that take place? So you would say that this, this, this case was in twenty twenty-two? This, so as I was already, it was already.
Yes, it has a. In fact, they, they say super important.
I know, that's.
I, I also put the ES.
To the?
GS.
To the ES?
Yes. Because what I said.
What do you know of that ES?
Eh?
What is the name of that ES?
Prince Paul Iwaye.
Okay.
When I sent him the letter, on Saturday night, he called me in the night. He was insulting me that no court, no court was stopping from packing the tractor and generator.
And this is twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
So the problem with that, that is like I say, immediately document how you did it. But the court, seven, huh?
No book of that conversation can also be read.
Yeah, but it's not related anymore. It's not related, so it's, it's just, it's worth it, it is. All right, eh, madam, that's one issue. You gave us this copy of eh, because last year we said we need to know the whereabouts of this mechanical eh, generator and and the tractors. You told it was in Gaurav State, I remember that very well. Eh, I'm looking at some old tractors here. Since I don't bring them now, please show them to the petitioner, if this is the tractor. Come on, sir. Please show us, show. Is it? All right. So bring, bring it forward, did you show them, did you show Adamo? Did you see, okay. Now let me ask you, the photograph that you, when you brought, how long did it, those tractors, they look very old?
Sir, I was told, because I was, I didn't see them when we were brought. I was told when we were brought from Adamawa, it was in bad condition, which was the reason why they were taken to Gaurav Muthus. Gaurav Muthus is the one that Naldah has a contract with for refurbishment and maintenance.
No, these pictures, these pictures is not about, about something going on with the tractor. It's some, it's a tractor that is old and almost unable to, to move. That's, that's what I'm seeing in the pictures I sent to you. It doesn't, doesn't look like, the other one I've sent is that the one in, in other court that has Naldah written on it. Clearly, do you, do you, do you have such from the tractors?
Yes, we do, but the thing is, they were all brought to Abuja, Gaurav Muthus, and this new ES now has spread them. He took some.
No, I, I understand, I, I understand that. What I'm saying is, the one written with Naldah.
These ones do have the sticker.
I, I can't see it, I can't see it, I can't see it. I can't see it to that eh, because the point of, the point of driving and it's simple. That I'm trying to weigh my mind, but I think I've reached, who does the act tractors? They were moved from Adamawa or these are just random tractors.
Look, these, these pictures that I'm doing, I, I swear on my life that they belong to Naldah.
Oh, yes, they belong, they belong to Naldah. But whether I'm not in a particular tractors, on that court order, that was supposed to move.
I'm not sure about whether they were those particular.
Oh, all right. Okay, so you have to say about that. So, that tractors were even moved at home, contravening the court order. You're now a lawyer, I wonder why you haven't taken up on the product or that issued the order? Have you gone back to this court to say the order that the vehicle has been disobeyed or planted and seek remedy? There's, there's remedy for content of court.
Yes, 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 it's a challenge.
You, yes, sir, yes, sir, you do?
Yes, we do.
So what, what was the outcome of that? What did the court say?
What the court say, the court now, the court, the court ordered that the, the executive secretary should show cause why he did that. But up to now, up to date, nothing was done.
Did you ask the court to issue a warrant?
Yes, we asked the court to issue a warrant.
Did the court or the other, uh, issue a warrant?
The court did.
And the order was served on the police?
The, the warrant, the, the court gave, served the warrant, the one, the, the warrant, the, the, the predicament. Our challenge is that we, 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 we does not have the financial capacity to mobilize and then get the.
Mobilize, we don't mobilize anything, if a sample is very terrible. There are men all over the country, they can apprehend, they are bringing back.
We, 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 we give it to the commissioner of police and to the, to the, to the state CIT in Adamawa State.
And what did you do with it?
That, he said that, he, he said that he was, that he was going to complete the inspector general of police.
Do you know if you can.
And one AIG that is in charge of all that, is that the AIG will take care of it. And up to date.
And when was that?
Eh?
When was that? That was in twenty twenty-two?
Twenty-one, sir.
And so up, until then, you are still waiting on the police to bring them up before the court?
Yes, sir, and nothing, and nothing was done, sir.
You have, madam?
Sir?
He was dismissed?
Yes, sir.
Why was it dismissed?
He was dismissed because eh, several times disciplinary committee was sat because eh, he was given eh, he has two queries and also eh, there's records that shows that he misappropriated money. He used eh, Naldah land and he didn't tell Naldah that he was using the land, which was something that I explained before. And he said he came, he did it that time after he, that he met me, I was worried out, but he still wants to farm and harvest and, so so he sent, he didn't see us, so eh, from farm to harvesting and selling, it's not a right there. So he, he, he thinks that he didn't get to see me or he has to tell us that he wanted to use the farm for the community so that he can farm and harvest. So the person that gave us the land to work on, we had, we had an MOU with them so that we could share the harvest. They, they, eh, withdrew their eh, eh, their partnership and when we asked why, that was when we found that out and that was eh, the query that was issued to him.
Yes, sir, yes, that's something.
Yes, sir. The, the issue of the land, Naldah, the land was claimed by Naldah. But when it was time for the Naldah to bring a seedling and to mobilize, financial mobilization so that the work will kick off, they waited, the, the coordinator, they waited in Adamawa State so that they, 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 they will respond from Abuja here, but Naldah would not do anything. The, the petitioner had to travel down to Abuja and get it to Abuja, and get it to the head office. He went to the head office and then asked that they have fled the land, that the land that they, they, they got, they have fled the land waiting for, and rain has started for it. They have not been giving eh, seedlings, they have not been financially mobilized so that the work will keep, will keep up. That what they did, that the coordinator used his eh, resources to ensure that this land is on his claim. And that has been done. What he was told is that, that the executive secretary has resigned to go and contest for election and there is no executive secretary now and the, the people that are, the, the staffs that are at the, the headquarters in Abuja no longer have the power to issue our seedlings and then they, they must, they probably quiet for this exercise. So he has asked them that, oh, he, that his predicament is that the villagers, the village, the villagers that, the villagers are sad, that, that are disturbed that if they are not going to, 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 to cultivate this land, to plant that it should be given to them because they also had meat to cultivate this land. And when it was obvious that there was nobody to mobilize, then he was giving an oral directive from the headquarters so that, okay, the villagers should continue.
Who gave the oral directive? She.
I said it here last time.
Madam.
And when that directive was, I'm coming inside, I'm, I'm coming inside. And after he finished, I'm coming. And after they finished farming, they were not, they didn't mobilize. There was no record that they mobilized, they didn't seedling. There's no record that they didn't financial mobilization. The villagers farm and harvest it. Then later they now, they are asking to, they are asking for the products that they did not give seedling, they did not give financial mobilization. How can that, how can?
So because, because they didn't give the seedlings, they didn't give financial mobilization, so the, the proceeds of that transaction was taken by who?
By the villagers who cultivated the land individually and separately.
You organize those villagers, right?
No.
You mean villagers just came upon the farmland and just started farming?
Yeah, sorry, sir. When Nalda called me, we are doing Adam preparation. We did only forty hectares of land in Kiridan. That land belongs to community, not belong to Nalda. I came to head office, registered in Adamasak area by end of February. We did, we did this land clearing by end of March. March, April, May, June. Nobody says anything. I came to head office to see the head of admin, that's Hajar Akaw. When I met Hajar, she said, Oga has resigned, but he brings, our former head of admin. Oga has resigned, he brings someone outside the agency and over the office too. That's Halima. I asked her in the car park, I, 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 I went to her office to see her.
Who?
She, Halima, she can see me. The next day I came to the office again, she's going out, I met her in the car park. I said, madam, I know that I, I had an E S hand over the new office to you. She said, yes. I said, okay, we did a land clearing in Adamawa State. And they don't give us seat, don't give us anything. She said she don't know anything about Adamawa State.
And so, how about that conversation? She said you know it's Adamasas, you went to Adamawa State.
Yes, yes.
Tell me something more.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to take tractors back from the earlier conversations. Hajar, when, when was your query given? What date? What the query that was issued to, you are the one that was.
Yes.
The petitioner, right?
Yes.
And so, Hajar Halima, when was the query given to him? If you can have the date, please.
The first query was given to him on the third of March, twenty twenty-three. And he didn't respond until the thirteenth of March. And that was when, after we had written a reminder.
He replied.
And he replied with an apology letter for allowing the villagers, this is the letter that he wrote, for allowing the villagers to use our farm land at Talon after it had been prepared.
So. First, third March, twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
He said first letter. Was there a second?
Yes, a reminder. When he didn't respond to that query, a reminder was sent on the thirteenth of March.
Okay, reminder on the thirteenth. And what did he eventually?
He responded that same date.
On the thirteenth of March?
To the reminder, yes.
Okay. So. When were the trucks taken? The, the tractors, the general question.
It was in November, twenty twenty-three.
November, twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three. I'm trying to drive at something. So what came first? The query or the removal of the tractors?
The query came first.
Why was he?
It was query because he, because of the partnership. We heard that he used the land and he harvested without letting us know. So when the landowners, now we drew their partnership, we investigated and found out how was the reason. And as he was saying, I gave him the, that conversation never took place. Well, like as he, he wrote in his response that he came and he didn't get to meet him. We never had that conversation. So it just shows how intrusive he can be. On the twentieth of March, he was now asked to come and appear between the disciplinary committee. Even while I was, I was at the National Institute for Security Studies last year in the course. The disciplinary committee sat, you know, while I was away. And they complained to me that at a point where the G E S calls them, the deputy directors, he was telling them that he hopes that they're not going to stay long because he has a plan to catch after being called to, to face the disciplinary committee. He's a level eight officer. He's a level fifteen and sixteen officers.
Okay, yeah. What happened after, very, very. What happened after the second query was sent?
After the second query.
Which action did you take after this two queries?
He was sent, then he was invited to appear before the disciplinary committee, which he came the minutes I'm submission.
Where was that?
We sat on the twenty-fifth of March.
You told him what? Okay, after that, what happened?
Then another query was given to him.
When?
In, on the third of, no, on the twenty-eighth of November.
Twenty of November. What action was taken after that?
It was given on warning.
Warning?
Yes.
Okay. Then to the eighth of March, October, what happened?
Of November, yes.
Why was he?
That was because of the, the refusal to move the implements.
Okay.
He was even directed and he refused to. And that was when he responded saying that there was a court order.
Of the court order?
Yes, this is his response to the query saying I should remove restraint of the implement of Nalda implements.
What, that, that is the third one?
Twenty-eighth of November, twenty twenty.
Twenty-eighth of November. What happened on that, on that October? Because that gave me the court order.
Yes, third of October was when the directive was issued to him to move the tractors.
When this order, court order was issued on May twenty twenty-two? Court order was issued May twenty twenty-two. So it's supposed to say that you already had a court order before the tractors were moved?
Sir, if it was issued May twenty twenty-two, then what he's saying that he had sent it to you for former years might not even be true because May twenty twenty-two, I was acting E S. I acted from April to August.
So the former years have left.
Yes, he had resigned and then he handed over to me because I was a senior supervisor. I transferred my services from F C T. So he, he, he handed over and I was signing as acting E S.
This is me now. He couldn't resign. You took one from the court then?
Yes, sir.
He resigned May thirteen twenty-two. His letter of resignation, yeah. May thirteen twenty-two. And this court order was in April twenty twenty-two. And he now said, what's that? The court order to someone that had resigned?
Yes, sir.
He was still in active service as I can tell, the order was May.
May thirteen. Okay, we're seeing that, that, okay. That's there, this is it.
Yes.
Alright, so madam. So in details, the reason why he was fired was because he did comply to the to the directives that should move, that should move the, I mean, the tractors.
It was just one of, one of.
That's one reason.
That's one of the reasons.
Second reason because he didn't, um, on time. So what do you mean? On time, respond to your queries?
Yes.
Is there a third reason?
Yes, he was posted to, he refused to vote his new posting.
Okay. So to Abuja?
Yes.
And he said he was sick or his agent presence was sick?
I don't know much.
Well, I can include something else. Your response was one of your queries. Like agent presence. So it's like, tell me, tell me the reason.
There's, there's two more.
Okay, which one?
The use of the land, Nalda land, land of the red land that without headquarters approval, it planted and, you know, it was prepared by Nalda and he didn't tell us, planted, harvested and sold. And he was also using the tractors, the equipment, which he said in one of his responses and also the disciplinary committee, that he was using the tractors and was making some money out of it, but he claimed that he was using the money to repair, repair the tractors. And this is all his probation, so his probation.
He was, I know what is, how long he was on probation.
Hello, Chavon. I think it's something that's missing. You query him and give him warning. You don't mention those issues again. The issue of dismissal came after he refused to release those trucks. And with our association, I'm coming. With our association, with the association with Chairman of, of S I N Nalda and he spoke with it. That was why we told him not to release those tractors. If you don't know, I'm telling you now that we asked him not to release them because of the way it goes to it. When it was transferred, the chairman spoke to them again. Asked him to send it transferred because he refused to, that's why they transferred him. After that procession, I told the chairman to remind him to report. And that was why he delayed reporting. With the argument that the M and the chairman of S I N Nalda spoke to him that they have been settled out. Which they were, what we give is a gift. So the issue is not what we are saying. The issue is about the transfer of tractors and trajectory. Which now you cannot, you cannot tell us where those tractors are. And that was why we insisted for those tractors to be repaired in Adamawa State, to be taken to Abuja. You can't take tractors from Adamawa to repair in Abuja. Because whatever kind of repairs you want, you can't take the truck from Adamawa to repair in Abuja and take it back. I was suggesting that, that why you take these tractors at this, you don't go back to Adamawa again. And that was why we told you not to do it. If you don't know, you need to know this. This is the reason why we actually don't do it.
Chairman, what you. Well, like I said, I think these issues are narrowed down to one movement of the, of dismissal. Right, two, two issues. Excuse me.
You don't need to make a confirmation. Because, so you know, I want to know what the difference between dismissal and chairman. Are there these one and seven?
Who retired?
And termination or what, sorry?
Because he's not on front of staff, that's why he can be summarizing.
I just want to know.
Yes, but termination.
Termination and dismissal.
It can be used interchangeably.
Yeah, seven, yeah. Alright. So there are two issues for me. So the question I want to ask.
This issue because dismissal is whereby somebody will be dismissed. After they will say dismissal is how they used to. That was the difference. Termination, I don't think.
When you tabbed it, it's been.
You know what, you know what I'm asking this question? And that just why I'm asking is because the head of the letter of dismissal is saying he asked dismissal of appointment. Uh, not just of dismissal, I mean. Then at the tenth end of it, you said Nalda has, having, in light of the hope, I write to inform you that your appointment with the national perpetual law agreement authority, Nalda, has been terminated with immediate effect. So that's why I want to know whether they. That is my question. So, alright, what's the difference? Just the difference, whether they are saying.
I believe in some cases they can be used interchangeably because as he said, dismissal, you don't get any, any benefits. And when you're dismissed, you're, you're ending to, because you, instead of reaching termination, you're saying your appointment has been ended.
Can you say it can be? So that's just what I wanted to remind us. So that, I mean, I've never been dismissed, I saw it and I feel that maybe for me.
Alright, uh. Madam. Can you, there will be a result, sir. Also suggest me, you don't want to bother them, but there will be results.
Sir. From my interactions with him, already there's no respect for his superiors. I'm the head of admin and should he come back now, he will do whatever he wants to do with no recourse to.
Can I, can I stand a short piece?
Sir, and it was not my decision. Disciplinary committee, the directors and the deputy directors.
You have, you have influence. You have, you have the influence.
Sir, I did touch that.
You have the influence. I can tell you have the influence. So can we not have, I mean, separate tests? I said I don't want to dig, I don't want to dig any further into the issue of order and moving the canoe and disobeying all that one. I don't want to also look at the fact of, of something that we're just, is growing. Whether or not his dismissal is based on the fact that he refused. He refused to listen to, to the advice or the directives of Nalda to remove the tractors. Because he's saying that he's not removing the tractor because there's a court order and he's escaped from doing that. And I know, you know, that that superior took any other order. That court order, superior to any other order. If the court says don't remove and you say he should remove, you have to obey the court order, not your order. On that note, I have got correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I also don't want to start thinking that could it be because he disobeyed that order and obey the court order is the reason why he was terminated? I think, well, I mean, I know you said no, but it's a play. That consideration is a play.
But he would have been terminated at that point. He was now imposed that to Abuja.
Well, I'm, I'm coming to that, I'm coming to that second, right? He was, he was, he was on probation, right? How many years, uh, will you be on probation before you have to leave?
Two years. Two years.
Two years. How many years has it, has it done one year before this decision, okay?
It was less than a year.
It was less than a year, right? So it's highly unlikely that you'll be posting, you'll be, you'll be posting someone out of his, out of his location, on that one year of probation. I'm not saying it's not possible, it's highly unlikely.
But he signed it was on.
I understand, I see, I understand that.
And he's not the first, and after him, others were also listed.
Ma'am, ma'am, I understand that. That even if you are hired today and say start work tomorrow, instead of work tomorrow, you can come back the third and say now you are posted somewhere. I understand all that, but I'm saying it's highly unlikely. And so. We're also looking at that aspect of it. Could it be because of that that you transferred him? That doesn't extort him from obeying first before he complains over that. In consideration of all of this, the committee is asking you, isn't there a way we can resolve this matter?
Sir, I cannot give you a definite answer now. I have to go back and speak with the disciplinary committee as well.
But you know where we're going. I'm sure, I'm sure you know where we're going, right? Because the, the act complained about, it's not about fraud.
There's fraud in it as well. Well.
The issue of what, the, what he said is, is, is the villagers that she didn't participate in it.
That's what he said.
That's what he said. And I'm not sure there's any proof that he did, but he gave it a lot to go there. I don't, you see, on both sides, there's a law, we are putting it through a scale and see where it weighs, you know? We should have a weight, this committee is not a court of laws. It's not, it's not your regular court of law to speak. Yes, we have thousands of constitution to do what we're doing. But, when we discharge this function, we make it hard of, not of a judge, but of the Nigerian citizen. And we also want to rule that against these NDAs, that oftentimes is the reason why we are sitting. If we were here who spoke about that of the medical registration, we couldn't, we couldn't tell everyone, take him and, and register him, because there were enough evidence for us to show, to show to us that he's not qualified unless he writes his up. He has a different opinion, but the opinion we rely on is on his written, it's on the paper, by the relevant agency. And so we can't just say because we are senate, we should overturn that. But your matter as well, we are trying to look at the humane aspect of it. This man just got a job, and he's put in this situation. And if you also understand that, that those communities are close to him, if it's not his community, immediate community, there are also communities close to him. And so whatever decision he took at that time, all of these things is going in his mind, that you and I probably do it. But, again, I don't want to go into all of those things. I want us to remove our caps as this and that, and look at the humanity of it. So I'm asking you, isn't there a way to resolve this? Because I know there is a way to resolve it, if there's professional on this side.
Sir, I repeat again, I cannot give you anything definitely, I have to go back with the management of Nada.
How long will it take? How long will it take?
I have to see whether they are all around.
Ma'am, the reason why I'm doing this is because you have, you have authority. And we cannot stand here to have your authority undermined by anybody. Because that's the reason why you exist as a part of it. I will not support anyone undermining your authority. You continue to uphold that, but I just don't believe there's a way. I don't also want to give you timeline, which is why I'm asking you.
Sir, why I'm not giving you a timeline is, it's getting to the end of the month and, and, uh, well, it's almost Christmas, and I know that some people have already asked for leave, so they will be traveling by tomorrow or Monday. So that's why I said I had to go back and see who is on ground if we can form a core of them.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, this one, we are going to adjourn this matter, adjournment, and the plaque of the committee will come back to you, or we adjourned it, so that you can come back to us to what, what you're managing, and we'll come up with. But I'm pleading, and we don't want to make that decision for you. But I want to look at the human aspect and see that we are able to balance everything, and come up with and make a resolution. But if that cannot be balanced, then we will go down, come up and come down on the issue about the matter. I don't understand. Still. Alright, how many exhausted we, how many exhausted we need to say to you? So this matter, oh, Mr. Chilia Bellham against Nada. It is the opinion of this committee that is, that this proceeding be adjourned for a short adjournment, so that we can afford both parties' opportunity to settle this matter and make a place. However, if they are not able to settle it, then the committee will meet and take a decision and will communicate it back to both parties. And this will be the other of this committee.
I, Gregory, I totally swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall build the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so let me go.
What is the, this is the case for the sixth sitting.
Exactly.
The last sitting, can you refresh, I don't really want to say. They asked, asked them to bring the list, what list you asked them to bring?
Your Mr. Chairman, you have asked them to bring, uh, the list of, uh, the officers that were from where they, and the condition of which that upgrade was done. Those were the two things. The list of the officers and the condition, whether it was an exam or not.
Officer, welcome. This is Mr. Chairman.
Can you probably introduce yourself, officer?
I am Deputy Director of Customs. In charge of Marisos, as I would be. And General Services is the Director of Legal Services.
Ah, so he's a lawyer?
Yes, sir.
The colleagues are here. So, did you provide us, do you have with you today what we asked for?
Yes, we, we, we have.
And can you, can you serve us in the place? We will give it to the class.
Yes.
Your Mr. Chairman, those are the upgraded, uh, officers, this is of 2009 and 2010, has provided. The Customs Service has upgraded some officers that, to the rank of Assistant Superintendent of Customs in 2009 and 2010. So those are the, yes, that's the list.
These are the list of those who are not great, those that are not great.
Yes, those are, that have been stagnated. Yes, yes, those are, that have been stagnated.
Um, officer, I have the 2009, 2010.
What is that?
2010.
Yes.
There was so, uh, recruitment in 2010, there were so many 2010. But was there, you know, what were your clients?
They were upgraded, they were already, uh, officers of the Nigerian Customs Service that were upgraded in 2009 and 2010. They are not new recruits.
Okay, so we are talking about new recruit, talking about.
Upgrading.
Upgrading, yes. So where's the list of 2010 upgrades? You are going to ask me this? No, I have one for you, but I don't have anyone for me. I have 2009, I have 2011, I have 2012. So what I want to know is whether or not that list, the 2010, whether they are awaited or forgotten, why is it there? Now, this your entire, does he also contain 2010?
2010, I, I just, uh, I, I said 2010, uh, in 2010, Nigerian Customs Service had no, had hardly been brought up.
No, we are talking about recruits. We are talking about recruits, we are talking about those who are upgraded. Are you saying that they also upgraded in 2010?
Uh, nobody was upgraded in 2010, unless the interpretation, the petition is, uh, is given is different from ours. Nobody was upgraded in 2010.
So is that an upgrade as well, that 2010 upgrade?
Yeah, I, I'm seeing, uh, this list in this room for the first time, but I have this to say. From the service numbers, about thirty-nine, thirty-seven thousand squad, forty-three thousand squad, these are all very, very old officers.
How old do you say they are?
Yeah, some, some have spent, uh, by now, some are even retired.
So you still get the officer that would have spent twenty?
Yes, so some, some of these officers have retired, some of them went to a service before me, so some of them are gone. Now, for them to have been inspectors of customs, in twenty, by twenty-ten, they would have been recruited, not as inspectors, but as frankfurter. They grew on, on the, in service to that rank, okay? If it is this category of officers that you're looking at. Hmm? Yeah, yeah.
No, this program is not going to cover it, it is because of cover.
So what, ah, this we are providing to Assistant Superintendent. Now, what is happening here is that at some point in service, that was in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, there was, uh, there was a board resolution of proper placement. Because, I, I remember I've said this in the, in this room before now, um, on, um, my, uh, previous meetings, that because of stagnation, those that were recruited as degree holders and as H and D holders, recruited as degree holders and H and D holders are, okay? Will be, uh, properly placed, that was the advancement we were talking about with our designs.
So this one, that's one, that's one provider of that.
It, it doesn't, this, this were not recruited.
It's not in this category.
They are not in that category.
So this category of, of, what's in front of you, are those who came in without H and D or B S?
Yes, from the, yeah, from, from the service numbers and, and going by the date in, by twenty-ten, from you to move, to, for you to be an, an inspector in twenty-ten, with these service numbers I see, that's spent up to fifteen, twenty years in service.
So, so it is your submission there on that, they probably came in, or they came in without university or H and D?
Yes, sir.
And so because of that, they had to go to the rank?
Yeah, they had to go to the rank.
And so those who came in with university, uh, or H and D degrees?
Yes, sir.
Even those that have complicated and then can rise?
Yes, yes, sir. It was a bold decision.
Fine, turn off your phone. Answer them, you are speaking there.
Mr. Chairman, no matter how flowering, the internal working of the custom may be, the decision to stagnate, consciously stagnate, people that they had set or given the directive to go to school, you have accountants there, you have, uh, uh, lawyers there, you have a lot of.
Let me, let me explain you a little bit. So, your clients joined the customs without H and D or B S in the process, right?
They lost us, a lot of them lost us.
No, no, they are present, I'm sure you spoke with them, I'm sure they gave you a brief and they told you, asked this question, right? So if they came in without B S or H and D, they would have stayed in this position for a while before promotion, but be that as it may, why they were recruited, they were permitted to go to school?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, so they went to school, probably spent four years of studies?
Yes.
Before they were awarded their degrees?
Yes.
Right? So they now came, so, let me understand you, are you now saying, or is it your position that those who enter with them with degrees? Those who enter with them with degrees are H and D? those who enter with them with degrees are H and D, and they who came in without that, but went to school while in service, they should be harmonized to be on the same level?
Yes, mister.
No, no, is that your position?
That's my position because it was the calculation of the custom, they came, they came, my, my, the petitioners, my client, my client came in as, they were upgraded to assistant superintendent of customs, while the custom now, uh, recruited some member, uh, some officers to that position also. For twelve years, for twelve years, the petitioners enjoyed seniority over the new recruit.
The new, so in this question, it depends, I, 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 I think I understand it. The pertinent question for me, I just asked and you said yes, let me ask it again, maybe, maybe I wasn't too clear. Those who came in, so you have, you have twenty officers that were recruited the same day, for instance, ten of them came in with degrees, H and D, B S A, and what have you. The other ten came with high school, right? They were recruited the same day, they started working. Am I correct so far? They did start work the same day, I'll just give you an example, out of twenty, ten had degrees, ten didn't have degree, but they both started work the same day. Example. And then in cost of their work, promotions were not stagnated, it was going on, based on if you have a degree or you have first, or you have high school. But in cost of their, of their service, those ten that came in with high school went back to school and got their, 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 their degrees and H and Ds. Am I correct so far? Am I making sense so far? I know, I, I'm most of the struggles right now, don't try, follow what I'm saying. Now, they came back with degrees. I ask again, are you not saying, that, are you not saying that, that those ten who entered by degrees and have come back, that they should be upgraded to the same level as the ten who came in with them but with degrees?
The same time, they should be upgraded same time.
That's what you are saying, yes, I just want to be clear that that's what you are saying.
They should be upgraded same time.
Gentlemen, would you? Sorry, I came, those I came, and, and I didn't go ahead in service.
Yes.
You go to same level, that's what you said.
No.
No, Mister Chairman, but I'm saying.
At the entry level, did they enter same time, same level?
No.
They, before, before they recruited them in two thousand, before they brought in new officers in twenty nineteen, the people that have been upgraded, that have been in the system, have already become graduates, they have already gone to school and kept graduate, so at the point of, at two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, you had graduates.
See, there is, is it service rule, my friend, wait, I go service rule. If you are the point of entry, you have got right, if you are the point of entry, is it, is it a privilege? Without approval for you to be, why, so people even enter service, they're entered with degrees, why they have degree? Or they are H and D. And let me, they apply for upgrade. This I know, it's all compulsory. There is service, there is rules, in every service, service is rules how to take, I know a lot of people that have this in customs. Particularly those who are in twenty, two thousand and nine, ten, and level twelve, as they both with the group, I know. People that came with H and D, with, uh, this, and they will now say that they have diploma or they have, they will do it, later they will now present it. So you cannot recruit with someone who does have degree and have degree and then they upgrade me, I said they upgrade because so they all had to accept to go to service, no, you don't have that.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, no matter how it is, it's a, a, a clear bridge of the constitution, no matter the system in the Nigerian customs service that brought about that, if you have decided to stagnate people just because you want to give room for some other people to go.
There are two issues, excuse me, there are two issues, you say stagnate people deliberately, it's different. This is a limited service, if you are going in, you know where you are going in, you know what level you are going in. From the day you are entering, you are, the first day of your entry, you know the experience, you know what you are coming in. It's sort, it's sort of when you are coming, you call, if you call pay, as you are coming, you know what you are coming in. It's something like, uh, because it's like service, no, this is like service, other service. They have their own services, they have their own procedures, they have their own ways, it's something like, because before you enter, you are aware, you are aware of what you are, what you are going for.
They are governed by the public service rule, the custom is governed by the public service rule, sir.
I was an officer, I entered and I went to train with my juniors, our own insubordinate. Yes, I interviewed them. I interviewed them, I recruited them. I went to train and we came out the same level, the same one. Those who are given special, special ranking and those who are lawyers, sometimes they give one, one, one level ahead, and doctors. Once you enter into service, that's how it is, you have the rules, you don't use constitution there, you have constitution there. All right, uh, let me, let, let me, let me, let me go back, I always ask, try to ask the question the name way, that's just like a sample. Because these twenty persons that were hired the same day, from the day they were hired, something has set in motion and one of those is their promotion. So those who came in with that degree will not be kept aside and not be promoted because they have to wait for those who now want to go to school and join them. So even if they went back to school and got a degree, their mates who came in with the degree at the time they were admitted or of that entry period would have been promoted where I have done. So when they now come, if you are telling me they should now bring their whole together and say, oh, you know, I want the same thing. Uh, even though they have, they are not having, they should now be harmonized, I don't think any service does that.
Mister Chairman, sorry, sir. This, as at, as at two thousand and nine, Mister Chairman, the people or the petitioners were already graduates in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten.
Okay.
So when other graduates came, they were on the same pedestal.
Yes.
Or being graduates. So if, if, if they needed to be promoted or upgraded, they would have set an exam, the, uh, public service rule says, when you are in a class, in, in an exam, in, in a class of people, an exam should be set for you to be able to select the people whom you are going to, uh, advance or promote. You cannot just come into a class and say, you, 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 you are promoted, why, you, 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 you went this, you were all graduates, or most of them were graduates, and that, that's exactly, I need to say, Nigerian customs service that said they should, they were not to school, so before two thousand and nine, before they did.
Did they enter with degrees and that's why their degrees not, not now recognized?
Counselor, yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman, I think we need to formally sit through this conversation because like, uh, you said, it looks confusing. But the point is this, I, I appreciate the explanation made by the district attorney about the public service rule. There are rules everywhere and the rules must be on the front. First and foremost, why I.
And this rule of justification must be equitable.
Yes, it must be, we cannot apply to one and use for the other differently, I very much agree with you, sir. The point is that, why I came with them is because in the first place, when they brought this matter to my attention, I asked for the petition because we need to see the petition to see what is the grounds of the people bringing us here. Because when we were coming, I must state that the case we are coming, we were thinking was before the, the committee is different from what we met on the ground. Because they are talking about these, uh, people who brought their list now that were upgraded in two thousand and ten. If you look at the heading of that document, it said upgraded from IC to superintendent. Then we need to know, because we may have to consult our records, to know why they were upgraded. Because IC, they are junior to superintendent. And a degree holder cannot be recruited as IC. So these people, like he was saying, they must have been in the service for a long time for them to have, uh, been promoted up to IC in the first place. Now, if they went to school, I have the director of legal services there, and I know for you to be giving, uh, study, you must sign a bond with service, we must first of all confirm because when you are doing a matter like this, there is justice to all the parties.
Yes.
There are more the justice to the Nigerian customs service.
Yes.
You can't just come here and put an indication before the public and you expect the committee to sit down and decide. We must get our facts correct, we must know whether they were able to give permission to go and study first. And secondly, even if you have gone to school to study, that does not mean that when you come back, you must be giving a priority over those who were there. Thirdly, even if we were recruiting in two thousand and ten and they were degree holders, the best we could do is to follow the bond assigned with the service, to know whether if you were level three, as at the time you were giving the bond and you came out now with your degree and the best they can do for you is to take you to level eight. They can't take, if your best that came in the same time with you, as the grade they are controlled as you go to level eight. That is this, that is the standard. So therefore, yes, therefore, this matter cannot be resolved even now, we must know who are these people. Because when you are addressing issues, we must interfere to all the parties, you cannot confuse us with, you know, your own claims and say we should not go into our records. When you look at the heading of this, instead two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, we talk the people that were recruited in two thousand and nine and, uh, eleven, twelve and so on, that were upgraded in two thousand and twenty-two, that was, and not, maybe some of these people are the ones complaining that maybe they were not accommodated. That was what we're thinking, so is it simply because we are operating from the unknown claim to come and be defending ourselves, so we, we, I am asking the committee to oblige us with a copy of the petition of these people, so that that is when even the constitution he is talking about, the constitution requires us to have fair hearing and oversee every other thing, and we are equally reliant on the constitution of very important of Nigeria that we are entitled to the petition in fact, so that we can dissect it and come forward with the proper and informed defense of Nigerian customs service. That is our position.
Thank you. So this, this last opportunity.
Chairman, we will look on the submission. Mister Chairman, we have this sitting for, this is sixth time for the Nigerian customs service to come up.
So, remember we are just, we want to see the document.
Yes.
And so documents come to us today.
Yes.
Right, and that has now generated some other issues. So what we be hearing was verbal, so we now, the committee now said, okay, we also resolve this matter, get to the bottom of it, we need this list from customs, and we also need the list of your clients, so we can match. That's the whole essence. Right, and so the list from customs are already here now, and that has now generated other issues. From the custom, the self, from the list that you have provided, from documents provided, that it cannot be, it cannot be the way you are saying because of, of, of the promotion's scale that they have, right? So if you have anything to say, tell us, but what we're going to ask is that the custom should go back and give us, give us this document again on what they are talking about, which is, and they said they need the list of your clients so they can match and see what to bring. Otherwise, it will be, it will be so difficult, like they said, they are also entitled to fair hearing. And from, from what they are saying so far, unless there is something waiting to obtain that, it will be difficult for this committee to, to hear your prayers and answer that. So if there is going to be any documents that is going to win your favor, then let's have it.
Mister Chairman, all the documents presented before you are, are those of the Nigerian customs service, the documents are in their custody.
Yes, it has, but they don't have names, they want names, but, but they have names, I don't even want to go there now. But they just look at the face of that document and they raise some, some questions on the face of that document. And you and I have agreed on certain things, that these guys or these gentlemen or these officers entered without college education, without university education. While in service, they went, they, they went to school, they came back. Custom is telling us that they have to be bonded in that circumstance, one. Two, they have to be also, be, be permitted to go for that education and come back. Three, that even when all these things are correct or complete, when they now come back, they don't automatically go to the, to a rank of, of, of DC, uh, A D C or whatever they call it, the deputy controllers. Because those they went in with are already the, uh, deputy controllers, that will go to level eight. They will go to the way, that's, that's what the injustice is. Now if, if that's a cause of injustice, they are saying that that is the, that's the rule and you will not make an alternative rule for people. I hope I'm not going crazy here.
You're not going crazy, Mister Chairman.
So am I correct so far? Okay, so if that is the case, let us afford them an opportunity to bring those lists, but they are saying that, you know how many customer businesses are there, are they going to go one by one by one by one? I don't know what they're looking for, unless they have a name, and I know you have a difficulty of providing the sense, and I understand that because you don't want a reprisal of, of these officers. Oh, you guys took us to committee, so now we're going to do this to you, going to do that to you. It might not be verbal, it might be body language, it might be other way of denying approval, or, or, or sending you to, to Iceland, you know, so that you can, you can cold and frozen to death, they, they can do that and they are not allowed to post their name on anywhere. So you're also trying to protect, protect that as, as a lawyer, I understand that. But, so even if you put that in one comment and then look at the issue before us, as it is, that, yes, they went to school, they came back, they can automatically catch up with their, with, with people who they entered service with, one, or even those who were recruited a year or two after that, but with college degree. Because they now will have to go to level eight. So that's what they are saying, that's their procedure, and if that is the case, it's the same way here, because you cannot write maybe the list for me to read to them. And what they have just told us is something we cannot obtain for no, for no other reason other than protection of clients', uh, uh, how would I say? Identity, thank you. So, gentlemen, you understand what, what I'm saying here, I'm uptight.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, sorry, sir, sorry, sir, sorry, sir, Mister Chairman. It's, uh, you know, the reason for this petition, that is exactly, if you, if you, if you get the heading of the petition and are just treatment. Veteran, a group of people, and it's in three years or even a, a, a promotion of the public service group that says that immediately you are, you have a set of people in a field for you to be able to know who's better than who, you set an example, you don't just go into that place and shoot.
Set people, okay, thank you. None of you, last year, turn off your. Yes.
Honestly, it is because we, like Mister Chairman said from the beginning, this is an atmosphere to resolve things immediately. He is a lawyer, and definitely he cannot tell me that, the way he considered his action before you, if he has considered his action like this before he got, the matter will be struck out immediately. Because you cannot bring faceless people before. Because you cannot bring faceless people before a very serious committee like this and you are asking us to deliberate on it. You must be clear, clear this must be known, defender must be identified. Here we are the defenders, this Nigerian customs service. Where are your clients? We must know them, you must give us their names, we must cross check from the records.
Counselor, Counselor.
So that is what we are saying.
For what, for what time, I will not.
So we are saying, our clear sound is that, let them give us who are the complainant in this case. Then we go to the records and come back here and address.
I, I understand, I don't feel like. I found the right, okay. So. So this, this is the background here. Do not have a name, then it will be difficult for this committee to tell us to go and bring all their records. And that's, that's almost impossible for us to do. And we have to, listening to their explanation as to how, how to do promotions based on qualification. It's also difficult for me to come to the point there. So that is me, what options, I don't know. Uh, so what we're going to do, since you can provide the list of, of your clients. And they are demanding that you, you still have to go back and check their records. I know just the class action. I understand that just the class action, but class action still have to be signed by one or two or three, four, five persons. Am I correct, Counselor? It has to be, the class action cannot just be blank. It can't be one, two or three persons standing for the whole class in an action. So we don't even have one, two or three persons. Uh, amongst your clients that are willing to come forward to learn themselves in this matter.
Mister Chairman, please, my clients are already being victimized by.
Okay, so we have, no, let's not run around, I understand. So that we said that is the reason why, we said that is the reason why we cannot submit that image, I agree. So help me, what, okay, what, what?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why we say upgrading the, the officers of two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, they have the list. They upgraded them, those are the people. Yeah, but we cannot bring out one or two or three of them because you're already being victimized, you are being stagnated.
So are they, are they still in service?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes, they are in service.
They are all in service, okay.
Any attempt, Mister Chairman, they will further victimize them.
I, I understand perfectly, but again, what I'd like to do now. Mister Chairman. The, the, the list, something that you brought to me, that has, that has, uh, some information on it. They look at that information and say. Because of, of, of age or the, the, the number of these officers. They can tell their service, their years of service in, in, in customs. And they also, they also say that if for these years, what they have, what they have now is I C S, that we call it. But that's what, what they have, it means that they came in without college or university.
I C S in two thousand and nine, not today.
I know, so they now went to school, came back.
You said two thousand and nine.
Whatever. Now you are saying, because I actually, direct question, are you now saying that you should be upgraded with those?